Good evening. We have several candidates for public service that are in our presence and I'm just going to go through and give each of you an opportunity before we call this meeting to order. Mr. Raymond Johnson, are you here? Good. Candidate for District Attorney with Jefferson County, please, to microphone, Jersey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, Council members, and residents. My name is Raymond Johnson and I'm running for District Attorney for Jefferson County. I've been practicing for almost forty years now as a public defender, criminal defense attorney, federal prosecutor, and also as a plaintiff's civil attorney. I want to be the next District Attorney for Jefferson County because I want to bring change. I want to make sure that every neighborhood, every zip code, wherever you live, whoever you are, you are going to be represented fairly and equally and with equity when you come before the District Attorney of Jefferson County. I want to take politics out of the District Attorney's office. One thing I will say is that I always had a very good, very good reputation with those in law enforcement. For those seasoned officers that may be around, I remember one case that I had where I was a federal prosecutor for a rob- regarding a robbery. And it also involved a Homewood Police Department officer by the name of Lee, Officer Lee. And in trying to apprehend the suspect, he was shot. I successfully prosecuted that individual and he served serious time for his offense. I remember receiving a letter from, then it was Chief of Police Trucks, who thanked me very much for my service. That's the type of work I wish to continue to do with the District Attorney's office. I have a variety of experience as a defense attorney and also my experience covers being a prosecutor. That's the balance that I want to bring to the office. That's the balance that I feel is going to be necessary to be successful. I come from a family who has always been involved in civil rights. My father was the attorney who taught me to practice law. He was a civil rights attorney. He was an attorney for Dr. Martin Luther King. He was also an original Tuskegee Airmen. I've been teaching law at Cumberland School of Law and Miles School of Law for the last thirty years in civil rights, constitutional law, and voting rights litigation. That experience is what's necessary in the District Attorney's office. If I get your vote on June 5th, I will make sure that Homewood is going to be continued, continued to be very well represented in the District Attorney's office. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We appreciate it, sir. Chris McCool for the Court of Criminal Appeals, excuse me.
Mr. President, Mayor, City Council, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you for a few minutes. It's especially a privilege for me because your mayor and I go way back. We grew up in church together and over in East Mississippi. I live in West Alabama and it's good to see him again and get to visit just for a few minutes today. My name is Chris McCool, as I said, as you've said already. I am currently the District Attorney in Pickens, Fayette, and Lamar Counties. That's in West Alabama. Some of you know where Gordo is. It's the route you gotta go to get from Tuscaloosa to Starkville. So, most of the time, you need to slow down there, but that's another story altogether. I don't prosecute in the city of Gordo, let me just say that. But I do prosecute in Pickens, Fayette, Lamar County. And I'm running for place two on the Alabama Court of Criminal Appeals because I want to take my practical trial experience to that level. The Court of Criminal Appeals is made up of five judges that hear every appeal from every felony case or conviction in this state and some misdemeanors and some other cases. And those judges review the record that we trial prosecutors and trial defense attorneys make at the trial court level. And they look at those cold words on the page of a transcript and they have to decide whether it was done right or whether there was some error that requires it to be reversed. And what I want to bring to that court is that practical trial level experience. I have been in trials, at the trial level, for twenty-three years as a prosecutor and two years before that in private practice doing both civil and criminal defense work. I bring a unique, a unique balance to that court that's necessary. We need, we need people at that level that when they read those cold words on the page of a transcript, they know what they're looking at. We're losing three judges in places one, two, and three that have a combined trial level experience of about fifty years. And I want to bring my twenty-five years of experience to replace one of those judges. I've tried everything from traffic tickets to Capitol murder. I've, I even tried hunting from the public road to a jury one time. Some of you, that's a misdemeanor appeal and of course I lost it because you're not gonna win on one of those over in Pickens, Fayette, Lamar County. But did the best I could and, but I've also had the experience of being called at five o'clock in the morning to come to the police station in Fayette. And after they secured the scenes, I had to walk through and step over the bodies of my friends Ace Mailer, James Crump, and Arnold Strickland, who constituted the entire night shift of the city of Fayette Police Department. They were murdered in the police station back in 2003. The young man that did it is currently on death row after a four-week trial. I've done that. I've been there. And I know what it's like to be at that scene and I want to take that experience to that level. Also, just sort of personally about me, I grew up on and live on and now run the family farm there in Gordo, Alabama, about ten miles north of Gordo, actually. We got about two hundred head of cows. I was out there this morning, unfortunately, having to deal with a dead cow situation and was trying to have a calf. So, I know what it's like to work. We got six chicken houses. I know what it's like to get down and dirty and have to work hard for a living. And you don't grow up on Harold McCool's farm in Pickens County and not learn common sense. So, I want to take common sense. You don't check common sense at the courthouse door. I want to bring that to that, that level. I'll leave you with this, and I do very much appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today, but I also pastor a church about two miles from my house and we actually been blessed to grow quite a bit in the last several years. And what I, what I always try to teach our congregation is that you don't, you don't put on your Sunday clothes and go into church and then take them off and put on your Monday clothes and you're somebody else. You need to be the same person that you are at church on Monday and Tuesday and all through the week. And to do that, you gotta follow what the Bible says. So, one of my favorite verses, and it's sort of a life verse for me, is Micah 6:8. And that's also what I want to bring to that level. "What doth the Lord require of thee but to do justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with thy God?" That pretty much covers it in life, but especially the judicial system. Do justly, do justice, do right in every case. That's been my job for the past twenty-three years. I want to take that to the appellate court. Also, love mercy, help people, be compassionate when you can when it doesn't violate the tenets of justice. And finally, you know, as my daddy always said, you know, "Walk humbly with thy God, son. Don't get too big for your breeches." If I make it to the halls of the White House one day, and God forbid I do, but if I ever made it to the halls of the White House one day and forget that I live on a dirt road in Pickens County, Alabama, I have not succeeded, but I have failed. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you again. I'm Chris McCool. I'm running for place two on Alabama Court of Criminal Appeals. I appreciate your vote and support on June 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCool. My wife's grandparents born and raised in Pickens County, so, you know, holds a place in our heart. We'll talk about it another time. Take care. Judge Bill Cole is also here for the Court of Criminal Appeals. Judge?
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council and the citizens of Homewood for giving me a chance to introduce myself. My name is Bill Cole and I've served as one of your circuit court judges here in Jefferson County for about twelve years. And basically, and I used to live here in Homewood, but during the twelve years when I became a circuit court judge, I think the Homewood Chief of Police was Chief Swearengen. I've worked with the, with the police department here in Homewood for many years as a circuit court judge. Since then, I know y'all have had Chief Dodd and Chief Robertson. And now Chief Ross has taken over and I know he served y'all not just as your, as your chief, but for many years on your police department. So, you're blessed to have such a good police department over the years. I hope that they would tell you that I have worked well with them. A lot of times, the police departments in the county, in different cities, need to have police, have judges there to, whether it's sign search warrants, sign arrest warrants, talk to judges about bonds for certain individuals that they've arrested. And I think that they would tell you that I've been there when they need me, whether it's during the work hours or after the work hours. So, I try to work very hard as a circuit court judge. Like I said, I also lived in Homewood for a couple of years. I lived over on Point Sienna Drive, right behind Shades Kahaba School. I loved that. I was there when my, when my wife was pregnant and when we had our first child and then my father passed away while she was pregnant, ended up moving back into the house where I grew up in. But I can't name a place that I liked living more than in Homewood. So, you're definitely blessed to have such a great city. But just a little bit about myself, I did practice law for about thirteen years before becoming a circuit court judge. I did a lot of criminal work as an attorney. That includes a lot of trial work and also a lot of appellate work as an attorney. I also served as Homewood's special prosecutor at some period of time for the city of Homewood. And I was a municipal court judge in Morris, Alabama, before I became a circuit court judge. And now I've served as a circuit court judge for about twelve years, handled mostly criminal cases. So, I've presided over thousands of criminal cases. That includes about a hundred and fifty felony jury trials and many, many other cases. I've presided over some of the most serious cases that we've had here in Jefferson County, including a triple homicide over at a hotel near the, near the airport and a quadruple homicide here in the county. So, I've handled some of the most serious cases that you can have and that we've had here in this county. I feel like I've done a very good job as a circuit court judge representing the people of Jefferson County and the people of Homewood. So, I certainly would appreciate your vote and your support. As I said, I'm Bill Cole and it's place three for the Alabama Court of Criminal Appeals. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. District Attorney Rod Richard Minor, are you here for the, there, for the Court of Criminal Appeals?
Council President, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, residents. As you said, my name is Richard Minor. I'm the District Attorney in St. Clair County. And last year, I was sworn into my third term as District Attorney by my former boss and good friend, Judge Bill Pryor of the Eleventh Circuit. So, as I stand here today, I'm in my fourteenth year as District Attorney and twenty-fifth year as a career prosecutor. And I will tell you, as Mr. McCool told you, I'm running because I think the Court of Criminal Appeals needs experience. And what I've done for the last twenty-five years, my last quarter at Auburn, I was the first college intern for then U.S. Attorney Jeff Sessions. Came here to Homewood, to Sanford University, Cumberland School of Law, lived here in Homewood my three years of law school, graduated and went on, first job was in Tuscaloosa County. God has a sense of humor and put an Auburn graduate in Tuscaloosa. Handled all the drug cases, all the felony drug cases. Then left and came here to Jefferson County and ran MayDet, which is the multi-agency drug enforcement team in Fairfield. Handled cases in the Birmingham Ambesmer Division. Until then, Attorney General Jeff Sessions called and said, "I want you to come work for me," in Montgomery at the Attorney General's Office. Left and went there to the violent crimes division until I became the chief trial attorney in St. Clair County and ultimately the District Attorney. And as Chris said, I've had the opportunity to handle cases, all the way from traffic tickets up to and including more Capitol murder cases than I care to remember because I think experience matters, especially on the Court of Criminal Appeals. If elected by the support of you and the citizens of this city and the citizens of Alabama, I will be the only appellate court judge, whether on the Supreme Court or the Court of Criminal Appeals. This actually tried a Capitol murder case, convicted a defendant, testified in his trial where he shot Captain Cecil Lancaster in Tuscaloosa, then drove straight down I-20 and came into St. Clair County and killed Police Officer Keith Turner of the Moody Police Department. I was asked to and I did attend his execution, so he has been executed for killing one of our police officers. But once again, I think experience matters. I had the pleasure to serve as your acting Attorney General for five and a half years and almost everybody in this room didn't realize that. And that's a good thing because my name wasn't in the headlines. It was the people that were being convicted. And it was for what was known as the post-secondary two-year college investigation wherein we convicted the chancellor of the two-year college system, state representative in Huntsville, state representative in Tuscaloosa, state senator in Jefferson County, the president of Southern Union Community College down in Lee County, the executive director of Alabama Fire College and the deputy director of the Fire College, as well as about fifteen other individuals who were stealing taxpayer dollars and putting it into their own pockets for their own personal use. I think it's time for someone on the Court of Criminal Appeals to have the experience, not only dealing with the criminal cases and the violent crimes and the drug cases, but somebody that understands the ethics law and how it's to be applied and what it calls for. I've also been appointed as a special acting Attorney General for a case in Marshall County where I was fortunate enough to be able to convict a lady for stealing eight hundred thousand dollars from the city of Albertville over a seventeen-year period. And we were the first case, and first case in Alabama, according to the retirement systems of Alabama, where we went into court and asked the court to forfeit her state retirement and to apply that state retirement towards restitution to the city of Albertville. So, that's kind of where I am as far as the last twenty-five years, what I've done as a career prosecutor. I will tell you, as a judge, I will rule based on what the law is, not what it ought to be or should be. And I, the two most important qualities, regardless of who you vote for for judge, whether it's locally or statewide, there's two important qualities that I think you ought to look for. The first one is humility. There's nothing that makes a judge more or less special than anyone else. But I'll tell you what does make a judge different. And I like the way Sandra Day O'Connor put it when she was nominated by President Reagan to be the first female Associate Justice of the United States Supreme Court. She said, "When I put on this robe, I've got one job and that's to uphold the Constitution." And so, that's how I see my job if I'm elected to the Court of Criminal Appeals. I will tell you personally, I am married. My wife Angie and I live in Pell City, Alabama. We have, I say four kids and people look at me funny and go, "Well, you know whether you've got four kids or not." Got a daughter that's a freshman in college, have a seventeen-year-old stepson, a ten-year-old that thinks she's nineteen, like her older sister. And then my wife and I, three years ago, went to court and got custody of her nephew and I'm proud to say that he's also a freshman in college. So, it's Richard Minor, Alabama Court of Criminal Appeals, place number one, and I'd appreciate your consideration and your vote. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Minor. Lastly, Judge Allen King for probate judgeship. Welcome, sir.
Hey, Mr. President. Good evening. And good evening to you and to all the members of the city council, to the mayor and the other government officials here in Homewood and to the citizens of Homewood. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm probate Judge Allen King. I'm running for my fourth term for a probate court in Jefferson County. I was elected in 2000, 2006, and 2012. I've been married to my wife Karen. On May 10, we've been, we will have been married thirty-two years. We have two grown children. My son, my daughter Kendall is a CPA in Denver. And my son and was married on February 1. He and his wife are both in the U.S. Navy and they're stationed in Japan. This is a great job, probate court. The reason why I'm running again is because we do a lot of great work. It's one of those positions where it's a privilege to go to work every day. And, and we, it's called the helping court. The helping court is because of the type of cases we hear and we deal with adoptions, we deal with adult mental health cases, we deal with guardians and conservatorships, we deal with trusts, we deal with, and I handle elections in Jefferson County. I've handled forty-three, three elections, major elections in Jefferson County, more than any other probate judge in the history of Jefferson County. I've handled over forty thousand probate court cases. And yeah, I, I just enjoy this opportunity. Like I said, it's a privilege to be in probate court. I hope to have the opportunity to stay there. This is really not a, you know, it's not a partisan-type court. You're just dealing with issues. You're trying to help people and families during times of crisis. That's what we do. And it's, I'll be in the Democratic primary on June 5 and hopefully from there, I'll be in the general election on November 6, 2018. I would appreciate everyone's consideration. I would appreciate your vote. And it's a great pleasure to be here and, Mr. President, and other members, and Mayor, members of the city council, I know y'all are mighty busy. Thank you for making the time for, for me and others to say a few words. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Judge. All right. The mayor's gonna be leaving us momentarily for a proclamation to the High School Show Choir that y'all are all aware of. And I just kind of thought I would put y'all on notice on that particular situation. And with that, we will call this meeting to order. If you will, stand with me. Mr. Jones has agreed to offer the invocation.
I'm sorry, we have Mr. Webb here from the fire department. I'm sorry, I didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not realize.
Yes, as a captain Webb, I apologize.
Please, now, forward. Thank you so much. We appreciate that.
Good evening. May we bow. Our Father in heaven, we come right now just to say thank you. Before we ask for anything, we want to thank you for everything. We thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank you for just being God and God all by yourself. Father, as these elected officials, this mayor, this council, and all the elected officials of this city and the people that represent it stand, we ask for your blessings upon them, that they give them the wisdom and the knowledge and the courage to do everything that's right for your people. Father, we thank you and we honor you. These blessings we ask in our son Jesus' name and for his sake. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. All right. Ms. Salter, call roll, please, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Mr. Waltony?
Here.
Mr. Thames?
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Here.
Mr. Wolverton?
Mr. McCluskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Mrs. Andress?
Here.
And Mr. Limbaugh, you have a quorum.
Yes, thank you very much. We're gonna begin with the reading of the minutes for the April 9, 2018, meeting. And the chair would welcome a motion for dispensing of that reading and approval of said minutes.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Thames, second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye. All right. Okay, any opposed? That is unanimous. All right, we've got quite a few board vacancies. Let's start with Ward 1 and work through Ward 5. We've got a vacancy with the library board, Ward 1. Mr. Waltony, do we have a nomination for the Ward 1 library board?
We're gonna have to schedule interviews. We have two.
Okay, good. Great. All right. Do we have a nomination for the Ward 2 Homewood Environmental Commission?
Mr. President, I'm not aware, Ms. Salter can confirm, I'm not aware of any applications at this time, so.
Now, all the applications I give, I forward out.
That's, yeah, I, so I'm not aware of any. I think we need to reopen it. I don't know what's.
Well, we can reopen it for thirty days.
Just say thirty days, then. And we also, let me go ahead and talk about this, George. We also need to open, let's just say for thirty days, the Ward 2 Historic Preservation Commission position. We got a letter of resignation today from the current Ward 2.
Okay.
Person. Thanks.
Thirty days, you said?
Thirty.
So, we will open both of those for thirty days. Do we need a vote on that, Mr. Kendrick, or?
No, sir.
Okay, good. Done. Historic Preservation, Ward 5 nomination, do we have one yet?
Actually, Ward 4.
Ward 4, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes. We actually do have a nomination. We had one applicant. It's Susan Zuber. So, we would like to appoint her to the Ward 4 seat on Historical Preservation Commission.
Great. So, we have a motion from Ms. Smith, second from Mr. Wyatt. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. And that is unanimous. And please let her know, Ms. Salter.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Board of Ed, Ward 4 nomination?
We do. We would like to nominate Charlie Dowd for a second term. And Mr. Dowd is out in the audience tonight.
All right. So, we have a motion from Mr. Wyatt, a second from?
Second from me.
Ms. Smith. Any discussion or if y'all wanted to ask Mr. Dowd any questions, I'm sure he would approach the dice. That being not the case, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And as you heard, that was a resounding yes. So, congratulations. Thank you very much for your service the last five years and we look forward to the great things that y'all will do in the coming five years. Okay? Good.
Does this mean I didn't have to let you know then since you're here? Because I don't have to let you know now since you're here.
Yeah, and you just saved us a letter, too. Okay. All right. And also, the Environmental Commission, do you have a, on Ward 5?
Ward 5, yes. So, we went from zero to sixty. I believe we have three applicants now, is that right?
Oh, okay. Then we need to schedule some interviews.
So, we need to schedule some interviews. Is that right, Ms. Salter? I know we have two at least.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay. Do I need to, I have, this is the first time I've done this on my own. Do I need to?
I'll just email you, let me know kind of what you're thinking about a time and I'll just have to try to coordinate everybody on the date. Y'all want to interview.
Okay, great. And so, do we go ahead and officially close that now since we have three applicants? Is that right?
Let's see, Ward 5 nomination, I mean, Ward 5 for Environmental Commission. Ward 5, Environmental Commission already closed.
Oh, it did? Okay, I thought we had just.
Three twenty-six is what it's.
Oh, I think we reopened it like indefinitely, but, yeah, so, okay. So, Melody, I'll just get with you tomorrow and we'll just schedule.
If y'all want to go ahead, I didn't note on here if it was open indefinitely, but if y'all want to go and close it, just for familiarity.
Yeah, let's close it.
Okay.
Done. All right. We have one addition to the agenda. This will be 220418. This is a request for consideration of approval of emergency road pair repairs by Brookwood Hospital. Is that where it is, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. And this is requested by the mayor. But that is the only item. Is there any other additions to be made? If not, all in favor of the amended agenda, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? I needed a motion, I'm sorry. And do we have a motion for approval?
Second.
All right. Motion for Mr. Thames, second for Mr. Higginbotham. And again, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to take things out of order just a little bit. We're gonna start with the first other new business item, 180418, request for consideration for Brookwood Village Road closure for the Art Crawl Summer Series, February, May 18, 5 to 9, on Friday, May 25, 5 to 9. And Friday, June 1, 5 to 9. Friday, June 8, 5 to 9. Friday, June 15, 5 to 9. And Friday, June 22, 5 to 9. Requested by Jennifer Gowers with GoPro Events Solutions and Melody Salter, our own city clerk and finance director. Ms. Gowers, go.
Thank you so much, President. I needed to add that Brookwood Live should be on this as well, May 3, 10, and 17. And I apologize, Ms. Salter, it may have been, I had long emails to you. Brookwood Live is May 3. The roads would need to be closed from 1 to 9 p.m., May 10, from 1 to 9, excuse me, 10 p.m. And then, May 17, 1 to 10 p.m. for those, for that concert series, in addition to the Art Crawl, which, right now, as far as the Art Crawl's concerned, it's just artists bringing their own tents, popping them up. They may be on the sidewalk. Brookwood Village is just looking to create that walking-around atmosphere in the village in right there with that road closed. So, it'd be just in conjunction with Birmingham Art Crawl and bringing art down to the village.
All right. Any questions of the council, particularly as it relates to Brookwood Live, since we didn't have?
May 3rd, 10th, and 17th.
Can you close it from 1 to 9 p.m.?
1 to 10 p.m., yes, sir. I apologize if I can't focus, my eyes are dilated. Sorry. Everything's bright and beautiful.
We're a forgiving group.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any questions of Ms. Gowers on any of these times? Mr. Jones, I knew you would.
I just want to thank you for not taking her last, like we did last time. You had to wait two hours, I believe.
Oh, that's okay, I'm here for you, so whatever brings it up.
I would move to approve this, I guess, as recommended here.
We have a motion from Mr. Jones, second from Mr. McCluskey. Any discussion or additional questions? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That is unanimous, that is Resolution 1852. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Okay. All right, now, we'll go back to our regular agenda. There is no consent agenda items. Old Business, 020418, request for consideration of an ordinance participating in the State of Alabama, 2018 Back-to-School Sales Tax Holiday on July 20th through 22nd, 2018, requested by our city clerk. Report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met Monday, April 16th, voted 5 to 0 to approve this item. Mr. Higginbotham made the motion and second by Mr. Thames.
All right, first reading, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir, it's an ordinance of the City of Homewood to exempt certain covered items from municipal sales and use tax during the week, weekend of July 20th and 22nd, 2018, is authorized by Act Number 2006-574. Whereas, in conformity with the provisions of Act Number 2006-574 enacted by the legislature in 2006, providing for a state sales tax holiday, the City of Homewood exempts covered items from municipal sales and use tax during that same period, beginning 12:01 a.m., Friday, July 20th, and ending 12:00 midnight the following Sunday, July 22nd, 2018. Section 2, this ordinance shall be subject to all the terms and conditions and definitions provided by Act Number 2006-574 and shall be applicable to all sales tax holidays as defined by the act, and shall be in effect for future occurring sales tax holidays as permitted by Act 2006-574 until such time as this ordinance is repealed by a specific action of a city council. Section 3, the city clerk is authorized and directed to certify a copy of this resolution to the Alabama Department of Revenue to be recorded and posted on the department website.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Motion from, I'm sorry, I'm brain dead. Mr. Higginbotham from Mike. And second from Mr. Jones. All right, roll call, please, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andress?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes. So, that would be ordinance number 2694. The chair would welcome a motion and a second for adoption.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Higginbotham, thank you. Someday you'll be 65, too, Lord willing. Second from Mr. Thames, okay? All right, roll call, please, ma'am.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andress?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so, 2694 passes unanimously. We move on to 010418, request for consideration to work in the city right-of-way at 211 Woodland Drive to replace the 20-inch-tall retaining wall along 150 feet of the property, requested by Brian Dudgeon and Vanessa McGrath, and so, I'm looking at Mr. Cobb, go.
Yes, sir. We have some photographs of this little short wall. There it is, right there. That wall's been there. I've only been around Homewood about 25 years, but it was there when I got here.
It's longer than that.
I know, a long time. I've been looking at it leaning for about 20 years.
That girl visited.
Oh. Wasn't that Mike?
Boy, you never know what information you're missing.
Was that when you lived down the street on Roseland? Walking distance, okay.
Watch it, Mr. Whoever.
Anyway, it's been leaning for quite some time, and it's been hit a time or two, and it's going to be in the street pretty soon if they don't replace it, so they'd like to replace it.
Great. Stand right there, report from special issues.
Sure. We met last Monday, and Mr. Dudgeon told us about his issue with his retaining wall, so the committee voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval to let them work in the right-of-way pending the appropriate indemnification agreements.
Right. All right, anything else?
He has signed the indemnification agreement, I've given it to the mayor. If y'all approve it, then we're done.
Great. Chair would welcome a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Thames, second from Mr. McCluskey. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? That'll be Resolution 1853, and that also was passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's all. All right, we move on to the committee referral agenda. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Gualtney, second from Mr. Higginbotham. We'll get there, you know. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, and that is approved. All right, we'll move on to 190418, under New Business, request to authorize the mayor to sign the Train, Heating, and Air Maintenance Agreement for City Hall, requested by the mayor. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Andress, second by Ms. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion about this?
This is the standard for any decision here.
Okay.
And it is budgeted.
So, it is budgeted, and it is.
Yes, off-train.
Yeah, Ms. Higginbotham, question?
Quick question, just out of curiosity, I don't have any objection to the item, just curious, do they do PMs on it regularly, come out every six months and check it out and that sort of thing? Okay.
Fair question.
Thank you.
All right, so we have the motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And that is also unanimous, and that's 1854. 200418, request to change May council meetings to Monday, May 14th, 2018, and Wednesday, May 23rd, 2018, requested by myself. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
So moved, second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Andress. Any further discussion? Everybody knows which days of the week we're talking about here. Okay, 23rd, which will be a Wednesday. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And that'll be Resolution 1855. All right, 210418, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of April 10th, 2018, through April 22nd, 2018, requested by City Treasurer and Finance Committee, Mr. Jones.
It's Mr. What's, I mean, Higginbotham.
Yeah, Mr. Higginbotham, okay. I'll pay for that one.
Thank you, thank you for that, Mr. Higginbotham, for doing that. Counselor to be named later. So, I looked over the vouchers, I had one question, which Ms. Salter and her staff resolved today. I did get some late additions, so I would make a motion to approve the vouchers I reviewed over the weekend with the inclusion of three additional vouchers from Parks and Recreation, and one additional voucher from the Homewood Police Department.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Higginbotham. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. McCluskey. Any further questions or comments? If there are not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That is Resolution 1856. All right, the final item is 220418, request for consideration of approval for, of emergency road repairs by Brookwood Hospital, requested by the mayor. Is there someone that can fill us in on that? I see that Mr. Cobb left us.
I will say, I know about it, too.
Ready to step out?
I know, he bailed on us a little early, Mayor.
I will say, he told me all about it, and I happen to know, because it's...
I've seen it, I believe.
It's on the street to my mom's.
Yeah, okay. So, we've sent out bids for the project, it's about 102,000, just north of that is the lowest bid. I was going to just declare it an emergency and tell him to go ahead and get started on it, however, they weren't going to be able to start prior to this meeting, so I felt the right thing to do was just wait, and let's have a valid vote on it and not do it after the fact. But we have no choice in this. The road is completely collapsed. If it's finance's pleasure, or pleasure of the council, then I would suggest that we use money out of four and five cent gas tax and small infrastructure. If you could be so kind to let us decide kind of what ratio we need to do from each fund on that, we'll report back and let you know, but don't know exactly what the breakdown needs to be as of yet on it.
And Greg told me, basically, there's a corrugated metal pipe that's under the road, that's been there forever, and the pipe has completely rusted through, and then it's causing the road above it to collapse. So, they're going to have to go in and replace the pipe with a concrete pipe and then redo the road.
Well, that would have been my first question, is why did this happen?
Yes, and it happened a long time ago, when apparently using corrugated metal pipes was something they did.
Concerns, Mr. Jones, or questions?
Is it up, just a question, so up to 220, is that, would that cover?
No. Oh, no, 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 no. 103 will cover it. It's 102 something.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I have a suggestion, please?
Sure.
Council needs to just adopt a resolution determining it to be an emergency and authorize expenditure funds up to $103,000 to remediate the damage.
That being, that being my question.
All right, that's Mr. Jones's motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. McCluskey.
It's all construction.
Right, okay.
Tomahawk. Tomahawk.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, this is Resolution 1857. All right, with that, don't get too comfortable, Mayor.
I'll have to make up.
It's your turn.
Nothing, nothing to deny except here, just a second, I need to slip out.
We understand. Buy and be safe. I would remind all of you as you're setting committee meetings that Monday night is actually a fifth Monday, so therefore, we're setting committee meetings for May 7th, yes. Mr. Gualtney?
I only have one thing to mention this evening, and it's probably on some other folks' minds. This Saturday is the Edgewood Spring Festival. Come out and support the school from 3 to 7, silent auction, games, et cetera. I'm sure you'll see Britt and I both there, so it'll be a good time. Please support our schools.
Great, thank you, sir. Mr. Thames?
How long, Walter, for finance?
About 30 minutes.
Okay, I will set P and D just 15 minutes at 5:30 then.
And this is May 7th, correct?
For May 7th, yes, ma'am.
At what time do you say?
5:30. And I won't be in the Dunkin' booth this year.
And you need 15 minutes, Mr. Thames, okay. Mr. Higginbotham?
Thank you, Mr. President. Because of our unusual five-mundy month, it will be quite a while before we, council actually meets in a full council meeting again, and it will be subsequent to May 6th to the 12th. May 6th to the 12th is Municipal Clerks Week in the state of Alabama, and I just wanted to pause for a moment and express my appreciation, and I'm sure my colleagues share it, for Ms. Salter and her staff and everything they do for us here. Our city clerk is, makes sure that the trains run on time and everything is done appropriately and when it needs to be done, so I'm very appreciative of that.
Thank you.
Since it was going to be subsequent to the week, I thought I'd go ahead and say something now. I have one other request that may be out of order, but I'll let the chair determine that. I have noticed the presence of another candidate for judge who entered late, and I'm sure that she's been very patiently waiting for us to complete our meeting. Could I possibly yield some of my time and let her?
Sure.
Come forward and make a comment or two if she'd like.
Forgive me, ma'am, I don't know who you are, so if you'll state your name and what candidacy you're pursuing, we would be happy to hear from you.
And I do apologize.
No, no problem.
To all Judge King and Judge Cole leaving, we were at the same place, we were all getting screened, but my name is Keisha Davis. I am a judge at Birmingham Municipal Court. I thought it only befitting to come before the council and introduce myself and let you all know that I am running for Jefferson County District Court, Place 9. I am a lifelong resident of Homewood. I grew up here, I went to school here, I graduated actually with Mr. McCluskey from Homewood.
I'm sorry.
It's very good to see, I have all my hair, but...
We get the stories.
Yes, I won't tell, I won't tell who's... But I think we both did well, but I am in this race, there are several people in my race, there's five of us, but there is no Republican opposition. This is the court that's held by Judge Lichtenstein. He's held this seat for the past 18 years. Prior to my taking the bench at Birmingham Municipal Court, I was a district attorney with Jefferson County District Attorney's Office for 13 years. I tried many cases there, I worked heavily in the community, so I just wanted to let you all know that I was running. This race will be decided hopefully June 5th, I hope it does not go into a runoff, but I did want to address the council and let you know and leave some information for you if I could. Thank you so much, and thank you for suspending the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Higginbotham, is it? All right, Mr. Wolverton?
Just one thing tonight, and it also has to do with the fact that we won't have a meeting until after this event, but we are going to have our town hall meeting on May 10th at Trinity West Homewood, the Oakmont Campus for Ward 2 at 6:30 p.m. Again, May 10th.
All right, thank you. I'm going to, again, since we've suspended once, we can suspend twice. The mayor just let me know that the low bid was $103,290, so I think if we go back to revisit 220418 to approve $104,000 instead of $103...
Yeah, that'd be Resolution 1857.
Right. All right, again, motion from Mr. Jones, second from Mr. McCluskey. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good. We handled that, thank you. Appreciate you bringing it to my attention, Mr. Bischoff. All right, Mr. McCluskey?
Yes, I'll set public safety for, you said 15 minutes, right, Britt? I'll set it for 5:45, and I'll only need 15 minutes as well, Ms. Smith. And then, I believe I sent an email out to everybody last week, but we have a date set for the annual basketball game between the council and the Exceptional Foundation. So just make sure that we have, because we'll, we'll probably start to see some trash-talking posters being put up in different places around the city very soon, so just be aware of that, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. McCluskey. Mr. Jones?
Finance is already set for five o'clock, so we'll need thirty minutes, and I wanted to say, I will, we got a great idea, I've been telling Mr. McCluskey, he's cooked hamburgers over at, for your, is it the Fall Festival at Hall Kent, and so I've always said, we need to do that at Edgewood, so this year I'll be cooking hamburgers, and so that should be, all the, the dads are going to be doing that, so you come over there, Britt, and we'll put you to work, so that'd be great, so I want to thank you for that great idea.
You're very welcome.
You come and have a hamburger.
Okay, I'll be.
Good, and the good news is, Mr. Thames, that'll be, that'll be getting wet from sweat, not from being dunked, so.
So that's all I have, thank you.
Good, and Ms. Smith?
I need to set special issues, I'll start at six, and I have three, I only have three items and they're all right-of-way items, so I feel like twenty minutes is probably enough. I don't want to say fifteen, because I'm scared one of them might go over, but I can say six, six to six-twenty for special issues. And I did want to say, the Homewood High School soccer programs are doing very well this season, my son plays on the JV team, and they completed their season this past weekend, winning their second tournament, they are undefeated on the season, twenty-four oh and one, scoring a hundred and ten goals, only allowing eight, and they are really, really good, and they beat a bunch of seven A. schools, including Hoover and Vestavia in the process. And then the varsity boys are in the playoffs, they're ranked number one in the state of Alabama, and they are playing their first playoff game in Waldrop Stadium Saturday night at seven versus Pelham, who they played last year in the playoffs and who Pelham eventually won state championship, so it's going to be a big game, so come out and support the boys' soccer team, they're awesome this season.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Watt?
Since Peter isn't here, I didn't notice any public works on the referral.
There are none, no.
Nothing, so that doesn't need to be set.
Are his minutes over there, is there anything carried over? That we need to address?
He, y'all carried over thirteen oh three eighteen, request for consideration of paving an alleyway, oh, that's one of my items, behind Devon Drive. I need to talk to him about that, I'm not sure, I need to talk to him about that, so, yeah, let's set it for six-twenty.
Set it for six-fifteen?
Yeah.
I think you need twenty minutes for?
Then set it for six-twenty, yeah.
All right, and then the only other thing is to congratulate Charlie Delfit again. Thank you for your last five years of service, and we look forward to another five years from you.
Ms. Andrews?
Okay, I have several items. I would like to congratulate the Homewood City School Foundations for an excellent fundraiser, Homewood grown was just a, I think, a home run, I mean, I loved hearing from John Zimmerman, it was a beautiful night, it was fabulous, well-attended. I would like to, the Homewood Boys and Girls Tennis Team, high school, have both made it to state, and as this meeting was progressing, my son was losing his second-round match, so he is out, but the, we still have several players on the boys' side that are in, and the girls also are playing right now, so they are at state right now, wish them luck. This past weekend, our church held a five K and ten K, and so I would like to thank the Homewood Police Department for their help, and also the Homewood Fire Department came out and filled our dunk tape, so if you guys need help on Saturday with the dunk tape, they can fill that thing up in five minutes. And then finally, on Sunday at two o'clock, the Freshwater Land Trust is hosting a hike, which will be across from where the new Phase Two extension is going, so it's in the Wildwood Preserve, and it's at two o'clock, so that should be interesting, I've never been down there and look forward to seeing it in person. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wolverton has asked one item.
I just, I forgot one thing, I wanted to congratulate Ms. Andrews on completing the Boston Marathon last Monday in what was termed to be pretty horrendous weather and extreme conditions, so congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. I was going to say, I have two new, well, I have one new and one very long-term new hero in my life, and you're my new hero.
Thank you.
Anybody, anyone that can complete a marathon, a, the prestigious marathon in the terms of Boston, and do it in four minutes and how many?
Four hours and thirteen minutes.
Four hours and thirteen minutes.
For four minutes!
No, 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 sorry, sorry.
Record-setting, four hours and thirteen minutes, it was, it was second to personal worst.
But you're not factoring in the condition.
Not those conditions, I could say, that was, right, exactly. My, my other personal worst is also at Boston in two thousand and twelve, and it was ninety-one degrees, so it was my, but thank you very much, I appreciate it both of y'all, thank you.
All right.